Call the meeting to order here. Madam City Clerk, would you call, do a roll call for us?
Yes, sir, thank you. Mayor Robert Parkhurst.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Christine Lowe.
Present.
Councilmember Edward Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Jean Goss.
Here.
And Councilmember Kelly Crebs.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a form.
Great. Councilmember Garcia, I think you have the pledge and inspiration.
Please rise if you're able. Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of our own accord, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, as you know, if you come to these meetings, sometimes when I do inspiration, I get kinda deep. This time I did not.[127.14][127.14](Laughter). And so, I look for inspiration by looking at, you know, what's going on this month, what is the national day of, all those things. And I happened across a website on this day type of website, right? And so, many of the things are kinda sad and bad. So, I tried to edit things that were interesting and important. So, on this day in 1834, Henry Blaine was the first African American granted a patent, and that was for a corn planter. On this day in 1884, George Eastman patents the paper strip photographic film. In 1892, Arthur Conan Doyle published The Adventures of Sherlock Holmes. And now, we're in baseball season. A lot of these are baseball, so I tried to keep as many baseball in as I could. 1911, the largest baseball crowd ever was 38,281. That was at the Polo Grounds in San Francisco. The Giants beat the A's two to one. It was also a gate record of $77,379.
Oh.
So, that was the average of about $2.02 per ticket. And The Economist and me, I went to the CPI, and I looked, and basically prices have increased about 34 times since then. And I was surprised that the tickets would be on average $68.89 in today's dollars. So, it wasn't really that inexpensive. It was a pretty expensive game. In 1912, Teddy Roosevelt was shot when he was about, before he gave his speech when he was the Bull Moose Party, when he split off from the Republican Party. And he had a really thick speech in his pocket, apparently, and it saved his life because it slowed down the bullet. And he gave his speech with the bullet, I guess, still in the muscles of his chest.
And blood on his shirt.
And blood on his shirt, yeah. A few more. On this day in 1947, Chuck Yeager had his first supersonic flight. In 1964, on this day, Martin Luther King Jr. was announced as the winner of the Nobel Peace Prize. In 1964, Roger Maris and Mickey Mantle hit home runs on back-to-back pitches. And again, The Economist and me, 1976, Milton Friedman won the Nobel Prize in Economics on October 14th. There are four national days. It's National Dessert Day, so get something sweet after the meeting. It's National Real Sugar Day, so don't get that fake sugar. Make sure that sweet thing has real sugar. It's National Be Bold and Be Free Day as well. I'm proud. And it's National I Love You Day. It's a day for expressing love. So, I love you all for coming here today, and I love my council, and I love the staff, and I love Sierra Madre. So, make sure you express love to someone that you love. And that ends my inspiration.
I would say let's postpone Dessert Day to tomorrow because the Library Foundation is having a fundraiser at Handel's. So, maybe have real sugar dessert tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yeah. You could do that because it'll be tomorrow somewhere, right?[327.22][327.22](Laughter).
All right. We've barely started, and we're already off the rails. I love it. We've got a meeting agenda. I'd like to call for, see if we've got a motion to approve the meeting agenda as written.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So, Mr. City Attorney, we've got a report out from closed session.
Mayor, the City Council met in closed session to discuss three items. The first two were both a conference with a labor negotiator. In this case, the city negotiator was the city manager and the assistant city manager. And the employee organization for both items was the Sierra Madre Professional Firefighters Association. No reportable action was taken. And the third item was conference with labor negotiator. Again, the same city negotiators. And in this case, the employee organization was Sierra Madre Classified Employees Association. Again, no reportable action was taken.
Thank you, Mr. Gergo Garcia. All right. We're on to the approval of the meeting minutes from September 23rd. Madam City Clerk, did you receive any changes for the meeting minutes?
The City Clerk's office received one email from Mayor Parkhurst asking that a change be made from, a non-substantive change be made to the minutes.
Great. Any other changes or edits from the dais? All right. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. We will move on. I think we're on to City Council reports. So, oh, yes, thank you. Approval for reading resolutions and ordinances by title only. Can I get a motion for?
Moved.
All right.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, Mayor and City Council reports. Who would like to go first?
I don't mind going first.
Mayor Pro Tem.
I would go last, so. On September 27th, the Sierra Madre Community Foundation had their whiskey and wine tasting. It was fantastic. We had a great time. It was a great attendance and some great silent auction items, and there was a few of us there. Mayor was with us, too. So, thank you to the Youngs for hosting at their home, and thank you to Mandy Buchanan Morrison and the Sierra Madre Community Foundation Board for all they do. On Thursday, tense, too, I attended the California Workforce Development Board with our Foothill Workforce Development Board. And that was actually a very worthwhile, exciting meeting for our area especially. I learned a lot. The state of California's Workforce Development Board is really trying to collaborate with our school districts, our community colleges, as well as our labor force, and doing three main goals. One, finding out exactly what labor has changed and is needed based on our area for the fires, as well as the state of California, and what do employers need to have employable skills from our youth coming up. So, K through 16, CTE is one of their goals, which is exciting because that's my job. That's what I do for a living. There are other goals called the Master Plan Career Tech Education, certifications versus just degrees. And that's looking at people that actually have been working in fields for multiple years, have earned professional certifications, but don't have the degrees, like a bachelor's or a master's or a doctorate, and using that as an equivalent because they're actually certificated and working in these fields already. And then, the last part was looking for livable wages for all of our employees, and how do we train, again, how do we train people for what industry is needed in the future? If you looked at the labor market, they noted that coding is no longer a hireable skill. Everyone knows how to code nowadays. So, if you majored in coding or that kind of ICT, then you are not finding any jobs. So, those kinds of trends that are changing. So, that was interesting. On October 5th, I did not run the Mount Wilson Trail Race Recovery Run, but I was there in attendance. It was fantastic. And then, on October 8th through 10th, we all attended the Cal Cities. But one notable workshop that I attended was called the Palisades Fire Recovery. And I just wanted to say that it was really interesting to see how they, how their EOC ran and what happened the same night as ours, and how it differed and how it was similar. So, there's a lot of reporting out that we'll come to. And we're also noted in our, in our report already of our Eaton Fire. One interesting thing was that they really used CERT to do evacuations while we used the search and rescue groups, and we're looking to use CERT in the future. So, please sign up for the CERT group in Sierra Madre, everybody. It's a necessary group that we're really gonna need to utilize. And they also called their evacuation zones by common names instead of using numbers so that everyone in the public can know which zones they're in, instead of me who's asking that night, "What zone am I? What zone am I?" So, that was interesting.
Great. Thank you very much. Who would like to go next?
I'll go.
Go ahead.
You want? Please. Okay. Sure.
Yes, I went to whiskey and wine, too, at the Youngs' house for the, sponsored by our Sierra Madre Foundation, and it was a lot of fun as it usually is. Thanks to Heather and Jason for opening up their beautiful home once again, which is amazing, and to the Foundation Board for putting on a great event. On the 7th of October, I attended the most recent library ad hoc meeting where we're getting updates on the progress of our new, building of our new library. Another very positive meeting, two in a row. Progress is ramping up. They've hooked up the water, which wasn't a small issue. The interior is taking shape in the new addition. Building's really starting to look like a library now. On Tuesday, the 4th, the members of the committee have been invited to go on a tour of the project. And after we've done that, next meeting after that, I'll report on what I see. I also attended the Cal Cities Conference in Long Beach last week. Picked up some good information and found that, networked with people and had a great time. Was well worth doing. And that's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Garcia, why don't you go next?
Sure. So, October 1st, I attended the Chamber of Commerce Board Meeting. The topic was really about Winterfest. So, just a reminder for those that are here tonight and watching, Winterfest was typically on Saturday after Thanksgiving, which was Small Business Saturday. But our business has requested to not have it on that day, which makes sense, and that was also in the Cosmont Report, if you're around for that. That was one of the recommendations. So, this year will be on December 6th, from 12 to 8. It will be similar to how it ran last year, where there'll be events in Kirsten Court, throughout Sierra Madre Boulevard, and then also in Memorial Park. And that's where the snow will be. Instead of by the bank, it'll be over in Memorial Park. So, make sure you come out for that, spend money in town, and enjoy the festivities and the lighting of the tree. On October 2nd, the Senior Community Commission met. The big ticket item was our wonderful City Clerk gave them an update on the Brown Act. And that's always very important for our commissions to get a little refresher. Sometimes it's important for the council to get a little refresher on the Brown Act. So, thank you, Madam City Clerk, for giving that informative report to our Senior Community Commission. October 5th, I watched the Mount Wilson Trail Recovery Race. What an amazing event. Our Mount Wilson Trail Race is always an amazing event, but, you know, this was a whole different thing, a 5K through town, more runners than ever. It really, it felt good to see that again, to have our community come back and rally around the mountain. Hopefully, we get our trails back in shape sooner rather than later. But hats off to the, to the Mount Wilson Trail Race Committee. I did see some of my colleagues up, running up and down Baldwin, which is probably one of the most difficult things to do, and my wife also ran it. But I spectated. But another great Mount Wilson Trail Race event. I also attended the League of California Cities from the 8th through the 10th. Lot of good information at, at the conference on finance and other issues. I was able to sit in quite a few sessions, and also networking. It's important that we know our regional partners well because we help out one another every now and then. It's really, really important to have good relationships between the cities. And then, finally, on October 10th, I attended Art, the Art Walk, the second Art Walk. It was a great, another great event. Lot of people dining in town, going into the shops, seeing the art. So, hats off again to the organization that, that puts together the Art Walk. And this was the second one, and I think in like four months, and it's going strong. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Crebs.
So, some of this, actually, all of it will be a repeat. So, I wouldn't say I ran it. I would say I jog walked the trail race. Maybe, yes, maybe next time I can go start downhill instead of starting uphill. But yes, I agree, and I know there's been some discussion about maybe not replacing the 5K with the race when the trails are back open, but maybe augmenting and having both. So, things to think about. And I think it really was a nice opportunity for people who are typically not able, interested, willing, whatever, to actually be on the trail and have, but still be part of that, that type of event and that type of community spirit. So, that would be nice. And then, as my colleagues stated, we all were at the Cal Cities Conference last week. I'll just highlight two of the sessions that I went to that I thought were particularly interesting and relevant for our, our community. City Librarian and I attended a presentation by Santa Anna about how they are very much focused on turning their libraries into community hubs. And it was really nice to hear that a lot of the things that our library staff, you know, is bringing, bringing forth in terms of programming and changing our ideas about what a library means is not at all, you know, specific to us. And that's really a movement among, you know, our region. And there were some really great ideas that Santa Anna is implementing. So, it was fun to hear about other things that we could be thinking about in the future once we get our new library open. And then, I also went to a quick session on the legal track, talking about balancing our CEQA compliance, that's the Environmental Quality Act, and fire prevention and home hardening, which is obviously something we've talked a lot about. So, it was good to hear an update about that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Crebs. So, there were a couple of CPA meetings. There was one of the Energy Committee, and nothing really to report on that. Shortlisted some more energy projects. The Clean Power Alliance had a retreat on September 26th, looking at the future of the organization. How soon should all of the cities and counties go to 100% renewable, and how fast we should do that with respect to the state mandate? And then, on October 8th, there was a reception by the L.A. Business Council where the Clean Power Alliance for their wind project with Pattern Energy, the Sunzia Project, got an award. On September 24th, there was a sanitation district meeting, and nothing to report out of that, as others have been. I think most of us rode the whiskey and wine. And again, I want to thank the Youngs for opening their home. I thank all of the people for bringing out the delicious beverages. There were quite a few that I tried there. It was very nice. On October 1st, we had a meeting of the Transportation Committee, continuing to try to work to bring the Gateway Coach back or the next incarnation of that. I think we're getting very close to that. And then, later that day, the National Resources Commission met, and nothing particular to report out of that meeting. I did run the Mount Wilson Trail Race, or most of it. That's a long hill from Baldwin all the way up to Miramonte. I gotta work on my hills. But it was really nice. You know, double the number of people that we normally had, 300 to 600 people. Three or four different high schools ran it. I was amazed at 600 people all going up Baldwin, and it wasn't as crowded as I thought it would be. So, it was really a great event. There was a great number of booths in the city. So, kudos to the Mount Wilson Trail Committee for all their hard work of doing that and getting that running. So, that was, that was an excellent event. For me, I was also at the Cal Cities Conference. Couple of things that jumped out at me. The California Conservation Corps has different types of crews that can come out and do, and work within the community, work in the foothills. And so, that was really interesting. That was a learning for me of like, well, how can we make use of them? We've used them over at Bailey Canyon to do some brush abatement. I wanted to dig deeper into that and figure out what we might be able to do about that. There was a couple of different sessions that were, talked about having shovel-ready projects, right? So, we all know that budgets are tight here at the city, in the county, in the state. And I think one of the things that people stressed was you need to have those projects all ready to go. So, when the funding comes available, you're, you are ready to jump in. I think the perfect example, we have that here in the city, was a library, right? We've, we had the plans ready. We had the everything, all the concept in place, and we were ready to run with it. When the funding, when we were able to go out for funding, I want to just actually thank former Assemblyman Holden that's here in the audience with us tonight that helped us get that, that funding. So, thank you for that support. And then, the other thing I learned about was from the IT perspective, you know, in this day and age, it's not an if you will get hacked, it is when. And how do you prepare for that? And concepts like recovery, recovery time objective was an interesting thing that I learned about that I wanted to explore a little bit more. On October 11th, there was the funeral for Charlie Bell up at Lizzie's. It was packed. It was a lot of people there. Just an absolute credible human being, and so many great words about him. It was really, really touching. He was such a phenomenal person for, for our community. And then, followed that by the Fire Festival down, Fire Prevention Festival in the Firehouse. You know, it's a great location to have it. It ends up getting lots of people in there, lots of balloons, and lots of information, lots of partners. It was, it was a really good event. And then, of course, that was followed that evening by the Chili Cook-Off. Maybe it should have been the other way around, considering some of the heat on some of the chilis. And congratulations to the Fire Department for winning both the critics and the people's choice for the chili. It was actually very, very delicious. Now, I'll move on to city announcements. Yes?
My memory got jogged. I had one more event, just, just for full disclosure. I also attended ribbon cutting for the sports courts at Alverno Heights Academy. And I was also attended by Assemblymember Harabedian. So, I wanted to make sure that was in the record as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. City announcements. Tomorrow, October 15th, from noon to 10:00 p.m., Handel's in Pasadena will donate 20% of proceeds, of proceeds to the Sierra Madre Library Foundation. So, but you've got to go in, you've got to mention Sierra Madre Library Foundation when ordering in person, or you can do it online. So, it's an easy way to cool off and raise money for our new library. In the back there on the table, we've got the library's calendar of upcoming events. So, go ahead and pick that up. We've got a number of activities coming up, Stitch and Share, Shelf Stories, another Sip and Shush, 3D Printing Basics, as well as many other things. We've got a packed agenda over there at the library. So, take advantage of those. And then, finally, the car show. The Sierra Madre Car Show, put together by the Sierra Madre Professional Firefighters Association, will take place on November 8th from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Registration forms are in the back if you'd like to participate and like to bring one of your classic cars. All right. With that, we've got the Participation Code of Conduct. It's on the back of all the speakers' cards. We just pointed out every time, just prior to public comment, we do abide by that for all of public comment to make sure we have a constructive meeting. And with that, we'll move directly on into public comment for any item not on the agenda. Madam City Clerk, do you have any yellow cards?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, there are three speaker cards submitted. The first of the three is from Pete Cibral.
Mr. Cibral.
Good evening, everybody. Number of you have already mentioned this event I'm gonna talk about. I do want to, on behalf of the Mount Wilson Trail Race Committee, thank the city for its support of this new event we put on on October 4th. It was really a partnership with the city, the Community Services Department, new staff altogether, brand-new people, kinda rolled with us on what we wanted to do. They were great. Police Department, Fire Department, Public Works. Bob Spears and I were marking the course on Friday night, and we got a call that a water main had burst just by the trailhead where we first turned around the night before the race. And we're thinking, oh, my God, we have to divert the race. What are we gonna do? And Public Works got to it that night and fixed it so we could have the race the way we wanted, we were intended. So, thank you very much for that. Congratulations to Kelly and Robert. Robert helped with the, with the awards ceremony, so thanks for that. Our esteemed city librarian, Leila, completed the course. We're very proud of her for that. So, I want to mention, you know, since January with the, with the fires and the subsequent rains that came through, you know, we could have just basically said, hell, let's wait till next year. Sit this one out. But we just don't do that. We want to, we want to figure out a way to actually have a healthy event that benefited the committee and, or the community, rather, and called attention to all the work that's been done on the trail and has yet to be done on the trail. Raise awareness for the Fletcher Trail Maintenance Fund that we support, that pays for all the materials and, and tools that we use up there. Since January, 180 different people have helped us up on that trail. And they're not from Forest Service, they're not from City of Sierra Madre, they're not staff, they're all volunteers. So, everybody kinda pitched in. We decided, let's do, let's do something a little different. 5K within town, what's gonna happen? And I figured 150, a couple hundred people, maybe? We got slammed. We had to cut it off at 600. We could have gone to probably 1,000 people if we wanted to, but we ran out of T-shirts, we ran out of goodie bags, we were worried about the space in Kirsten Court. So, you know, the sponsor support was amazing. Everybody stuck with us from the trail race on into this new event. So, basically, we've, as you guys have alluded to, we've kinda created a monster here. I mean, what do we do? Do we fold that into the trail race in May? Do we have a separate event in October? Do we say this is a one-year event and walk away? I really enjoyed the spirit of the race. It was just like Trail Race Day, but double or triple. And people really enjoyed, it families, young people, the high school kids were great. So, we're gonna, our committee's gonna look at it, we're gonna talk about it, we'll talk about it with the city, and we'll figure out something else. You know, we'll figure it out. Last thing I want to say about the trail itself. U.S. Forest Service has closed Mount Wilson Trail and the Bailey Canyon Trail till December 31st. That's right around the corner. I'm worried that the Forest Service is gonna keep it closed. And I'm not worried just, just for the trail race in May, but I'm worried about it being closed for a full year or longer for people who like to hike it, like to run it, people from out of town. There are so many people from out of town who come into this town to take, to, to enjoy that trail. And they spend money here after, after their hike, you know, in town. I'm gonna hopefully work with you and whatever agencies I can, you know, whatever influence you have. I talked with Robert about maybe Judy Chu's office being able to help, help us, but we really have to get that trail open, hopefully by the first of the year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Make a, a small comment on it. You know, the awards you guys gave out were these things called McLeod's. So, for people that don't know what a McLeod is, think of a shaft, and at one end, it's like, it's got a flat rake on one side, and then it is a flat edge on the other. And it's a firefighting tool, but it's also used in trail maintenance. Probably the, one of the most unique awards for winning a category, there are a couple people that walked home with a number of the McLeod's, a number of the young people. And what was most impressive to me was there was one of the high schools that got a lot of the awards. Actually, the coach got, got an award as well. And she turned, as she was walking away, she was like, and we're coming up to be on that trail to work on it. And I think that message was something that was really, you know, it was, it was a really smart call on it to call attention to the work that's needed on it and to increase that 180 people to even more to help us maintain that. And it's just, you know, at Charlie Bell's memorial as well, they were talking about all the work that goes in that trail. So, just thanks to you. I thought I saw Bob Spears here earlier. It's just amazing what you guys have done. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Madam City Clerk, do we have another card?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the next Yes, Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Liz DeCam.
Hello there, everyone, everyone. I'll try to abide by my three minutes. I have five topics. My first one is, I don't know if I need to state my name, address, Liz DeCam, East Laurel. My first topic is to say thank you for the council, admin staff, volunteers. I think public service is thankless, so I want to, first of all, say thank you. My second topic actually is another thank you, and it's to the council for the ban on gas-burning leaf blowers. I was listening, I live on a corner, I was listening to those gas-burning leaf blowers for about 25 hours a week because of all the houses around, and it was driving me insane. Not everyone's abiding by that ban, but enough people are that it's making a huge difference on my mental health. So thank you for that. My next topic is yet another thank you, and Pete did not put me up to this, but I wanted to thank you for that 5K. I will never run the Mount Wilson Trail Race. Never. I've hiked it and whatnot, but I will never run the Mount Wilson Trail Race. But I so, I participated in the 5K and had an absolutely wonderful time. My, my, my vote would be that you do the 5K in October and you do the Mount Wilson Trail Race in, in May and start that as a tradition. Like 600 people and plus, you know, their, their families and whatnot, I thought it was fantastic. I'm actually going to go a little bit out of order. I received this blue card in May. This blue card is for, what does this say here? Some kind of demolition permit and the address is 190 Merrill Avenue, which is in my immediate neighborhood. So I received this in May. I was out of the state of California in May and June, so I missed the comment period. But I wanted to publicly say that I am so wholeheartedly for this project. Right now, well, at, at one time, there was a tarp over that house. So, you know, it's, it's ready to, to go bye-bye. But I know the family, or I've become acquainted with the family, and they're darling people. They showed me a rendering of, you know, their proposed house, it's spectacular, it's a soul add to the neighborhood. So I just wanted to publicly say I am for this project, 190 Merrill. My last topic is, I'll try to say this very clearly. My last topic is open heap garbage compost pile. Heap, H-E-A-P. Basically, in the back of your property, you have an open pile of garbage. You get a chicken from, rotisserie chicken from wherever, you, you know, have it for dinner, and then the carcass is in your backyard. We are feeding, what, rats, bears, coyotes, bobcats. So I want this city, in my infinite wisdom, I want the city to ban, ban, immediately ban. I mean, I know you have to go through your processes. Open heap garbage compost piles, you know, do your process, have James research, whatnot. He does a very thorough job, I've, I've seen his reports. From my online research, I know my time's up, I'll be quick. From my online research, for urban areas, urban environments, compost pile structures, I'm not against compost piles at all. Compost pile structures with a tight-fitting cover that locks are best for urban environments where keeping out wildlife is essential. Where I live on East Laurel, I have a horrible problem with the coyotes. Okay, so I am practically begging you guys, come up with some kind of ban on open heap garbage compost piles. Make people come up with some kind of structure that has a tight-fitting cover that locks. That's my piece.
Thank you so much for your comments. All right. All right, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Chris Holden is the next speaker.
Great.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mayor, it's good to see you and council members. I can genuinely say, as I was sitting here waiting my turn, I miss you guys. You know, I don't miss getting on an airplane on Mondays and coming back on Thursdays, but I do miss the engagement and the dialogue and to be able to see how local government is doing a great job with you all at the helm. I wanted to just stop by very briefly, just to share with you a couple of things. One, what I'm doing now, and I, I hope it's okay to share with you. I've had the opportunity in January, February 17th-ish is when I started as the CEO for LA Fire Justice. This consortium came together after the Eden fires. I was taking care of my dad and wasn't exactly sure what next would look like. And this opportunity presented itself in such a way that I was able to do a lot of the things I had been doing for the last 36 years in terms of community engagement and problem solving. And being a part of this consortium is obviously an opportunity to represent fire victims and survivors from the Eden Fire and the lawsuit against Southern California Edison. And I think it's important to note that joining a group of people who won, Doug Boxer, who is the son of former U.S. Senator Barbara Boxer, and Michael Watt, and bringing together a talented group of people. I will say that before we knew what was going on and how the fire started, they were up in the canyons determining how it started. What impressed me was their integrity. They did not do any advertising, it was about trying to find out how the fire started. So every video you've seen and all the things we now know, it's because of that early-on work ethic. I'm very pleased to be joined in this effort with a number of people who used to work for me. Timmy Mackey, who represented Sierra Madre Forest, and Valente Riddle, who was my district director. And, and so this is about people who know the community and wanting to be a part of the solution and help fix a problem that should have never happened. I'll also say that we had an opportunity, although I didn't play a visible role because I can't really engage with legislators until the end of November. But we had a great team that was reaching out, really promoting Senator Becker's bill, SB 254. And it was very important that that bill passed because it was creating an additional fund which would support the needs of the fire victims here in the Eden Canyon area. It brought in another $18 billion to join the $21 billion fund that was established under my bill, 1054. And it was really important because having that additional resources in place was necessary in case there's another fire, heaven forbid it would be Edison, that would put everyone who was a victim of this fire in jeopardy. So it's a safety net, which is very important, and we're excited that that moved forward. If it's okay with you, I'd like to leave a flyer in the back that kind of lists a lot, a number of the things that we're doing in terms of workshops on insurance and on rebuilding. So it's more, it's a, it's a holistic approach at addressing this issue. It's more than just illegal, it's also trying to meet the folks where their needs are and to provide services. So thank you for giving me an opportunity to say hello and look forward to our paths crossing again. I think maybe in June of next year, maybe.
Thank you for your, your service here and for serving our community. Really appreciate it, it's a valuable need. Thank you.
Thanks for your CTE bill, too. I forgot to say thank you, that you helped with the Workforce Development Board, they mentioned you as well.
Madam City Clerk, do we have any other comment cards? If, if you'd like to make a comment, you can fill out a comment card and be happy to have you come down. But we need to have you fill out a comment card and come down.
First and then fill it out.
Okay. So you can give it, you can fill it out after you've given your comment. So do come on down and, and if you could just state your name?
Hi, I'm Ellen Andrews. Hi, Coach. This isn't a polished presentation or anything like that, I just had some comments. I read the fire report that came out recently. And I saw on page 15, the public information and warning. And on page 16, the recommendations. I saw that there wasn't specifically having a functioning siren on there. I would really appreciate that, having that, a siren that, and I know that there might be a problem with the generator, I'm not really sure about that. But you can hook up two generators with cybertrucks now. So I don't know, have a plan in place, you know, maybe get a cybertruck, maybe get a generator. Just, I think a real, a siren is really needed. I think it's stated under Key Takeaways on page 14 that options for non-digital residents. So I think that means, AKA, the senior population. So I think a siren would be really great for them. And I apologize if I didn't read that correctly. Also, on page 16, the operational coordination, and page 17, the recommendations. Number one was develop and adopt activation protocol for wildfire incidents. So I'm a little concerned that we're developing the protocol at this time. And I'm really concerned that that wasn't in place. I, I'm a little concerned because I'm one of those people that goes to a lot of the meetings for the fire prevention and I'm in a pretty, I'm in the thick of it up there. But what was concerning is I think I'm not getting what's happening. And I'm not sure if this was said to me, but I think the Fire Department might not help you until your home is on fire. So wildfire stuff wasn't being helped, I'm not sure about that. But the fact that I don't, I'm not sure is probably a problem because I, and so I think that needs to be stated to every resident in the canyon, they will help you with this, it doesn't have to be your house is on fire. The other thing is we need vehicles for the small rural roads. Maybe you, maybe there's a problem with how much equipment that you have and you can't have, you have to have a number of people to staff, whatever you have. Maybe we could swap something out. I, I think I heard that there's a vehicle for small rural roads that a couple of cities share. So I think maybe Sierra Madre needs their own one. When we had Idaho, I believe it was, they were zipping around the canyon, no problem, totally felt really great. Whatever Idaho had, that truck, I think would really be great. So if you want to look for a plan, just like the library, I think we need that truck. Also, whenever anybody says there's trash or homeless debris out there, I think that needs to be cleaned up right away, you know, just, we don't want to have, we just don't want to have that happen again. Like, oh, looking back, you know, maybe some people came to the meetings and let everybody know, I'm going to go over my time. They let everybody know, and maybe that wasn't cleaned up, maybe it made a difference, maybe it didn't. But that needs to be cleaned up for public perception. The next thing is we need the trained people on the streets. So that's the situational awareness part of the, the publication. So I'd like to have an opportunity for the Fire Department. Maybe each time the trash truck comes up, maybe they do a sweep through the canyons just to get everybody on the same page of like, they feel confident coming up in the canyons in our little tiny neighborhoods. And it would really be great if people up in the canyon saw them on a regular basis. Because I don't think that's happening, you know, just on New Year's Day, you know, you know, I know they come that day, but maybe some other times.
If you could, if you could wrap it up, please.
I think that there's an issue with the situational awareness. When my husband had to tell Fire Department personnel who came up where the fire hydrants were in our neighborhood. And I think that that's a real, a real issue. And I would like an accounting of what personnel from our neighborhood, from our town, were on staff, where they were stationed throughout the event. Yeah, what, who, who was on staff, when they were places and where they were places. In terms of coordinating needs, even today, I had a little bit of trouble because I had to evacuate with my dad, who's 89. So having an issue with the clicking on the website for Sierra Madre, click on Fire Department Updates During Events, and then just being able to see where are we, just write that. The other thing is, we need to spec-
If you could go ahead and, and wrap up, please.
I will wrap up in about 30 seconds. Another thing is, is on the way home that night, during the fires, I had an eucalyptus tree, I think, it was a hu, super huge tree, come down in front of me on Huntington. So I think that we need to have a scenario in place for fallen trees. So if we have the exit out of the upper canyon that's blocked by a fallen tree during that night, I know that happened in Pasadena Glen. They had, we need to know the protocol for getting a tractor out there or a truck. We need to know who to call, how fast that could happen, or if we have to walk.
So if you've got other comments, we'd be, I'd be more than happy to have them, have them written and sent in and have the Fire Department take a look at them.
Yes, and I do want to thank the Fire Chief for, when I asked him for a debrief with my husband afterwards, because it was pretty awful up there, he did call. He did call.
Thank you very much.
Helen, can I say just something, too, really fantastic? The Fire Safe Council is doing exactly all the great education that we need you guys to help express those questions of what you guys are looking for, what the public needs. And those would be perfect, too, that I took notes to give to them, but if you could help-
I have, I have sent them before, I just wanted to make it in a public arena. And the last is, I'm specifically concerned in the fire, in the fire report that we didn't have people who lost their homes in the fire have a special section. Maybe I missed that when I was reading. But I just really felt like a lot of it was about what we did, where we are, where we're going. And there wasn't an acknowledgement of the real grief. And I, there, there is a homeowner next to me that lost their home. And, you know, they're just trying to make it. And I really feel like more of an acknowledgement that we're just not over yet would be helpful. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments. Madam City Clerk, do we have any other comments?
No other speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
And did we receive any by email?
There was one email that was received on items not on the agenda forwarded to the city council. It was received from Glenn Hickman.
Great, thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to presentations. Chief Barrientos, we've got you up for a, a report on bear activity.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tempest City Council. So again, in our last city council meeting, excuse me, it's about three weeks ago, we haven't had a lot of activity still. So over the last three weeks, we've had eight calls for service. Of those eight calls, seven have been bear seen only. We had one conflict bear beer on week two, in week two. And that was a resident who was distracted by her phone, who went into their backyard, stumbled upon a bear. Became scared, ran, I would say, or stepped backwards and fell, tripped over themselves. And the statement was, the bear gently placed their paw on their calf, resulting in a small scratch. So week three, this, which is this last week, we've had one call for service, bear seen only. So it's almost nonexistent, no entry into homes, attempt entries, it's almost nonexistent now.
Great. Questions?
Have we heard from our neighbors? Are they experiencing, if you have heard, experiencing similar levels of bear activity? It's been reducing, obviously, a lot, or?
My conversations with the citizens is it's almost nonexistent, bear seen zone, bears are seen only. So it's almost nonexistent.
Were you asking about like Arcadia?
Like Arcadia, Monrovia, Pasadena?
Oh, you mean the neighboring cities?
Yes.
I have not been in contact with, with them regarding this, this issue.
All right, thank you. Great. If residents are interested in hazing bears, where should they get the best information on that?
It should be through the California Department of Fish and Wildlife.
And there is, and do we have a link to that on our website?
We do.
Okay, great. And, and should, what types of things are included in that hazing?
So they're talking about pepper spray, hazing, making a lot, a lot of noise, bear horns, things of that nature, just making a lot of noise. They don't recommend any sort of weapon or anything like that.
Okay. Hazing via drones, did, is that for, is that something that, I, you, you, I've talked about it before, but is that something that the police should do, or is that something that residents should do?
In my opinion, I think the police should do that, not the, the citizens. And we have the capability to do that. And we have the capability to do that. So all they need to do is call us, we'll assess the situation and then address it as a need, as need be.
Great, okay. Thank you very much. Any other? Thank you, Chief. All right, now we have a presentation from Kimberly Horn. Do we have representatives from there, or is Director Lynn, are you going to kick us
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I would like to introduce Sarah B. Barbe Haya. She will be the project manager that is leading the updates for the open space element and the conservation element. She will provide an overview of the update process, the objectives, and also how it is aligned with our city's long-range vision while complies with the state mandates.
Great.
Now I'll turn over to Sarah B.
Thank you, Claire. Good evening, respected Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. I'm here to introduce Sierra Madre's general plan update focusing on parks and open space element and conservation element. These two chapters guide how city protects its natural resources, expands recreational opportunities, and builds community resilience to climate change. Next slide, please. Every city in California ha- must have a general plan. The document is a long-term blueprint for planning the city for next twenty-two, twenty-five to thirty years. General plan should have these eight mandatory elements and other optional elements based on cities' needs. Tonight's update focuses on open space and conservation element, but all elements work together to shape a cohesive and sustainable future for the city. So why are we updating these elements now? Well, there are several reasons. The first is new laws have come into being. AB 1425, which was recently passed, now requires cities to strengthen climate resiliency and equitable park access. The other law, AB 1889, requires mapping and protecting wildlife habitat and connectivity. Other than that, most existing information is more than a decade old and there may be new data and updates to the data that we want to capture. We also want to reflect community values, residents' value of open space, tree canopy, and environmental stewardship. Our policies must, must match these values. And lastly, we want to align the policies with current and future needs. Park and open space element focuses on how we provide, manage, and expand parks, trails, and recreational opportunities in the city. So key themes for this element includes promoting safe and equitable access to parks for, for all residents, guiding investments in the communities towards community health and quality of life, setting goals for resource protection, new park opportunities, and maintenance of existing and future parks, and supporting climate resiliency through urban greening or tree canopies. Next slide, please. The conservation element, on the other hand, focuses on natural resource protection, which includes water, air, soils, minerals, and biological resources. It promotes a sensitive habitat protection and wildlife corridors, balanced growth so new development coexists with environmental health, and climate resiliency including open land conservation and reduced greenhouse gas emissions. So here is our timeline and next steps. Here is our roadmap, basically. October to December, we plan on finalizing existing conditions report and begin tribal consultation. In fact, we've already started working on tribal consultation letters and they will be mailed to the tribes pretty soon. January to February, we'll develop goals and policies and implementation acts, actions for these two elements. In March, we plan to release the public review draft and a CEQA exemption draft. And in April 2026, we are planning that we'll be able to come in front of you for adoption hearings. Within all, within this timeline, we will be hosting a public workshop in November to gather community input. And also, we will be doing some depa- meetings with departments such as Parks and Recreations and Public Works and other police department and so on to talk about existing conditions and also during the policy development stage. So, well, we, lastly, so we look forward to collaborating with the council and elected and appointed officials, city staff, the community and partner agency throughout this process. And thank you, and I'm happy to take any questions from you.
Thank you so much. Questions?
Yes, please.
So when I, when I hear general plan updates and different elements, my mind automatically goes to, to the housing element and the regional housing needs assessment and us having goals that we have to meet that are mandated by the state. So within these two parts of the element, because I, I think about what we've done already, we're trying to make our parks more accessible and equitable.
Yes.
We've done things like banning gas-powered leaf blowers that are bad for the environment. Are there any measurable goals that we need to meet with, with this update? Or is it more of we, we just need to show the state that we are, part of our general plan looks and focuses on these issues?
It's, it's a policy document, so it's overarching policies, but we will also have implementation actions along with the policies. For example, like when you talk about equitable access to the parks, we talk about how eight-year-old and eighty-year-old is able to access park, whether the, in existing conditions report, we will talk about in five-minute walking distance, which is a quarter of a mile, and in a ten-minute walking distance, which is half a mile, how many parks are within that walking distance to the residential areas in the community. So we'll talk about that. We'll also talk about how many acres of parks are there for thousand people in the, in the city and how that compares to the county or to the national average. And then those existing conditions will give us a understanding of what we want to have as a policy. So for example, if you have a park average which is less than the county or nation and what, what would the city want to aspire? So we'll have that as a part of like the policy and action development. Similarly, the walking distance or equitable access, how are your sidewalks? What, what is the, how, how do people access the parks? So we'll look at those conditions and existing conditions and that will tell us what in the policies and actions.
It's very helpful, thank you.
Other questions? On the wildlife corridors, so how are you looking at, how do the wildlife corridors apply to us? We, we just had a presentation on bears, so, you know, and I think there's also some mention of coyotes. So we've got, you know, lots of wildlife here. How does that, how does what you're doing on the conservation element relate to things that go on within the city here?
Yes, so in conservation element, this new bill, 18, AB 1889, wants us to look at wildlife connectivity and permeability. Basically, what it's trying to do is trying to connect the larger areas and smaller areas in the region so the wildlife can move freely. And that is something, when, when you see Sierra Madre, most of the wild, wildlife or the corridors are on the north of the area. So we want the movement to be lateral through, towards the north. We don't want them to come towards the south because there's not much connection to the south, to the other areas, unlike some of the other communities where you have these corridors that you want to enhance and make those connections. So what we will try to do is try to work with the police department, with the public works to see, to look at the strategies of how we can maintain these wildlife corridors so the movement remains on the north. But if there are any smaller connections through creeks or certain easements where smaller mammals can move, then we will try and enhance those connections. So sometimes, for example, if there are any channels, you can enhance those channels so smaller mammals can move from one larger block of green space to the other larger block of green space. So we want to create those kind of channels. The other thing is if you increase tree canopy, your tree canopy is already very robust, but the, the tree canopy is also a wildlife corridor movement for birds and other species that move over the trees. So we'll look into those kind of connectivity issues as well. We do have a biologist on board who will help us with wildlife corridor movements.
Is there any way to look at it kind of the other way? Like, you know, we have this wonderful gem of the Angeles National Forest, right? And I can't remember how many tens of thousands of acres it is. You know, we, we love our bears, we love our coyotes, but it would be really good if they stayed in the mountains and we don't start creating corridors so they come down into the city and, you know, past our city, onto the freeway. I mean, you know, we're seeing bears coming further and further down and we, we want them to, we want the animals to be safe, right?
Yes.
And we want the people to be safe. So are there ways that we can, can encourage them to stay up in the mountains where, you know, everybody is, 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 is safe and, you know, and they have a better quality of life?
Definitely, we will look into the policies that could help with that. Again, working with the police department and public works, we will come up with strategies like how you were talking about using drones to keep bears in the, in their area, but at the same time, looking at your development standards and seeing how your development standards, because we are encroaching some of these wildlife areas. So how we can restrict that encroachment, how we can preserve the open space as is so we're not developing into the open space. The more we develop into the open space, the more you will see that the bears are encroaching in our area. So that is something that we will have to look into, the development standards, and also your trash practices, like how is it enforced? I know there is, there are laws on the paper, but how much are they enforced and how, what we can do about the enforcement? Because food is one of those things that brings the animals into, into our area. So we'll have to look into those practices and see where we can, we can enhance some of those practices that city is already doing.
And, and on climate resilience, is there anything looking at? Fire, fire risk, fire abatement, you know, we were just, have heard quite a bit about fire-
Yes.
-this evening, and that's one of the biggest risks that we have. And then the corresponding floods and everything else that come with that. Is, is that included in the, in the resilience part?
So there, there is, there are two elements. There is a safety element and there is conservation and open space elements. And both of them have parts of fire, wild, wildfire. Conservation element doesn't deal directly with wildfire or open space element doesn't deal directly with wildfire, which is dealt in the, the safety element. But one of the things that we look into is, is climate resiliency and heat island impact. And based on that, we sometimes look into the tree canopy. And you have a very robust tree canopy and while it is an asset to the city, it's also one of those things that sometimes it, it's a fuel for the fire. So how, how are we, what kind of trees do you have? Are they, are they creating fuel for the fire or are they fire resistant trees? So that is something that we will touch on in the conservation element as well because one of the things that you could look at is urban greening program where if we find that most of the trees are very combustible, then there could be a policy where the city looks into replacing these trees over a period of time with more fire resistant trees. So you maintain your tree canopy, but at the same time, you're reducing the risk of the fire.
Great, thank you. Other questions? Yes?
I'm not sure this question's directed at you or Director Lynn, but in terms of the timeline and the process, I'm wondering, is it contemplated that a draft or some sort of workshop to put together what the community's goals and values are will also go through one of our commissions so that there's multiple opportunities for public comment and public input? Because I do worry that just, you know, sort of one workshop at the beginning of the process, you know, and then, you know, not seeing anything until we get to, towards adoption, that sometimes we need a couple iterations of, of input and, and discussion through our, you know, city, city structure before we, we can get to a comprehensive document that's this, you know, this broad and this deep.
Yeah. So, yeah, we have one workshop towards the beginning of the document where we will talk about issues in the city. We will also ask for the ideas and public input on what some of the strategies could be based on the discussion, based on the topics that we are covering. But after that, when we are developing goals and policies as per the scope right, right now, we will be meeting with Public Works and some of the other departments, Parks and Rec Department and the Police Department to go through some of the goals and policies in the document. And then there will be a one-month public review of the document, which will be like the document will be floated to public for one month for their comments before we get to the hearing.
I would, I would just maybe, maybe mention that we do have a natural resources commission that does touch on a lot of these. It might make some sense to, to have that be, be part of the process. Maybe they review a draft before it comes to council, just because I think different constituencies throughout the city pay attention to different meetings and different groups and those are also residents and so, on the commission. And so those commissioners might have their own sense of things that will bring a different viewpoint than just the five of us. So I just, the more public input we can get, I think the better, given that, you know, the wide-ranging nature of this and that we really are trying to dig down as to what the public wants. And these are things, particularly with respect to open spaces, that we know are very important to our residents and we hear a lot about public spaces and parks and, and all of that. So I think, you know, the more touch points we can have, the better so that people have the opportunity to, to provide input.
Ye- yes, and when we provide the administrative draft to the city, both for existing conditions, which will be provided later this year, and for goals and policies, we encourage, encourage Claire and other people involved in the process to give it to various departments for review and gather all the comments from these departments so we can incorporate all these comments. So we'll definitely do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for coming tonight and for the presentation. All right, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. Madam City Clerk, would you read the consent items by title only?
Yes, sir, I will. There are four items for the city council's consideration this evening. The first of the four is consideration of Resolution 25-56, approving certain demands. It is staff's recommendation that the city council approve Resolution 25-56. The second is consideration of Resolution 25-57, approving a settlement agreement and specific release of claims with the Sierra Madre Professional Firefighters Association and individual current member, employee members. It is staff's recommendation that the city council adopt Resolution 25-57. Consent item C is other post-employment benefits, funding, policy compliance, and fiscal year 25-26 governmental accounting standard board statement number seventy-five actuarial valuation. It is staff's recommendation that the city council receive and file the fiscal year 25-26 government accounting standards board statement seventy-five, number seventy-five actuarial valuation, confirming the continued compliance from the city's pension and OPEB benefits. And lastly, strategic plan update. It is staff's recommendation that the city council receive and file this informative report. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. All right, any questions on item A?
I have a question.
Yes.
So under the Mount Wilson Trail Race, I see a lot of payments that go out towards signage, towards race painting, all, all kinds of things to do with the event. Are those reimbursed from their fundraising funds? How is that handled, remind me? Is it run through the Sierra Madre Community Foundation? through the Sierra Madre Community Foundation, reimbursed to the city, or how's that done? I don't know who to ask, so I think it's...
May, oh, do you want to? Mayor Protem Lowe, the Mount Wilson Trail Race Committee operates as a full volunteer, and any of the events that they organize on behalf of the race are invoiced to the city, and the city staff processes the invoices for payments. If the Mount Wilson Trail Race members make purchases on behalf of the race, and the city does reimburse the members for payment, but that typically doesn't happen. Usually what does happen is that the vendors directly bill the city for services.
So all of these are coming out of the general fund? So we pay for all of these events? I could have sworn they were done through...
So there is a lot of fundraising that occurs?
Yes.
But the Mount Wilson Trail Race is a city event.
So, are we talking about the, like, the shirts?
Everything.
Part of the shirts, there is, there is a fee to run the race?
Yes.
That fee offsets the cost for the shirts, is my understanding?
Yes. Yeah, the registration is with the city, and the payment for the registration is deposited into the city, and then those funds are used to pay for goods and services.
So does, does the Fletcher Fund or anything get any of the funds for the race?
Registration does include an option for donation to, a contribution to the Fletcher Fund for trail race recovery, or trail recovery.
But everything else is, is to cover the cost of the city?
That is correct.
So it's intended to be a cost-neutral event?
That is correct.
Any other questions on item A? Item B. Item C. I had a question on, on item C, just as you sat down, Director Rainey. So I'm looking at the McLeod Watts Report, and I just want to make sure I, I kind of understand what I'm seeing here. So if, if I look at, at our net liability, so I'm looking at the, the accounting information on page ten of the report, and, you know, between 2018 and 2025, it kind of like, it bops along right around a, our net liability around 200,000. Sometimes it's a little bit more, sometimes a little less, sometimes it's negative, but, you know, kind of, it's, it's in that, that neighborhood, maybe a little bit less. So is the, is it accurate to, to assume that we're really maintaining our, maintaining our level of liability or covering the, the liability of the city over the, the past, whatever this is, nine years or whatever, ten years?
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. Yes, we are.
Okay.
And every two years, we have to do an actuarial study to basically look at what the coverage will be, what the future liabilities will be, so that we can see that it is being funded adequately. And that's where you'll see in the agenda item, we put what our target was in 2019, I believe, and where we stand now.
Got it. All right. Thank you very much. All right. Any questions on item D? All right.
I guess, sorry, I have a question about IMD. Now, is this purpose to approve these, this item, or, because I see the three options of editing, approve, for the strategic plan, that's what we're talking about. And my one main question is, it looks like the green that we accomplished from some of the items already was the same in 2024, and almost the same in 2023 strategic plans, when I compared all of them. So why do we just keep repeating things we accomplished over and over and over again, when they're not purple, which means ongoing?
Thank you. And Steph would be happy to take a close look at that. Maybe it should be purple instead of green, but per council's direction at the last update, I did compile a list in, at the last appendix of all of the things that are accomplished, thinking that might be a handy thing for state of the city, or just to have, you know, ready to answer questions about.
I also kind of, I wondered about this, this process. So in 2024, we had a draft that was presented, and then we approved, that was in February 13th, and then we approved that, those corrections, and later in that year, I believe, in June, in July, in July, we approved that draft, and that was our process in 2024. Here in 2025, we're just being presented with the strategic plan for approval or edits, but it's under consent instead of like discussion. So a lot of these items, I, I haven't seen anything change. There's nothing different between this strategic plan of 2024 and now. No, no new additions and changes. Most of the items are exactly the same, like I said. Even the ones we've already accomplished for two years now are still marked as accomplished and done, so they're still in there, but there's nothing new according to like what we've been covering over this year, all the new agenda items, those kinds of things, like implementing the master plan. It's not, like, for say, fire department, those things aren't in there.
No.
I wasn't done yet, sorry. Can I finish, please? Thank you. So my question is, not, not your section, not anybody's section, the overall strategic plan, is this meant for us to approve as is tonight? Is that your idea? Or is this more like, let's take a look at this, this is a draft, because I don't see it saying draft, like it did in February 2024?
Thank you. It's an update for you to receive and file, but you have an option to provide input. This comes directly from our strategic, strategic planning event, and the council by consensus can add or remove any of the items on the strategic plan. I do go out to all the departments for these updates. You're correct, there is not a whole lot from the April to, to today's. I tried to provide as much information on why that might be. I did get some feedback that, you know, with the Eaton Fire catching up with FEMA reimbursement process, some of the stuff did get pushed back. I tried to make the comments and make those, you know, situations demonstrative and, and give you what I could, but as I said, the council by consensus can add or subtract or change anything on the strategic plan, and we'll bring that back with an update.
Thank you. That was my main question. Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to add that if you look in the budget book, we do have the strategic plan in there, and that every performance measure, goal, and objective is tied to the strategic plan goals. So that was a modification that was made per the mayor's request, so that we can more readily tie what we're doing with the strategic plan. So if you look in this year's, the 2526 budget book, you will see it's got a numbering system that ties every goal to an objective, to a strategy, to a project. Even the performance measures are tied to that.
I, I appreciate that, and that's what fantastic organizational and reference, but I was meant that the strategic plan itself doesn't seem to have changed, if at all.
We get to discussion, I think we can talk about that.
I just kind of, wasn't sure of the purpose.
Right, yeah. All right. So now, since this is a, a, a hearing item or a discussion item, so we need to open up the public comment. So, Madam City Clerk, do we have any comment cards for the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, there are no comment cards, and the city clerk's office did not receive emails on these type, on these items.
We'll go ahead and close the public comment period, and we can open up the items for discussion. So let's start with, is there any discussion on A, B, or C? All right. It sounds like there may be some discussion on D, so let me open it up to any discussion items on D.
So, from what I recall, this, the strategic plan was a document that was started by, I guess it would be the previous council, and it was a document that we had created and then we approved. And so going forward, what we're looking for is just, are we meeting objectives? We're not, typically this thing doesn't change by staff. As, as Management Analyst Carlson said, it would change at the direction of the council. So I, I just want to make sure that, yeah, because you weren't, you weren't here when we made it, so I want to make sure you understand the document.
I guess my point was that I didn't see any changes from the recommendations we've been giving all last year, in terms of these items specifically, like things that we have already agendized and approved, and changes we've already made.
Specifically to the, we did, I don't recall ever making any changes to the strategic plan specifically.
So on, remind me of the date, but I believe it was the April date that we first looked at the strategic plan?
On the update?
The update that was received. We had some comments that night, but we weren't approving it that night, so we didn't, we didn't go through each item number. So just things like that, and things like, like, for instance, we've talked tonight, we've talked at length about updating the fleet project and, and capital projects updates. And so by, by us recommending these things and other agenda items, I wouldn't think that we would specifically necessarily, when you're going to develop and maintaining long-term financial planning, that these would stay exactly the same. They've been already accomplished for two years now, so there's nothing in that section that's new. It's been the same for two years. So why wouldn't we put capital projects, fleet project planning, you know, financial projections for futures? Like, why wouldn't we put that in there? Or why wouldn't we have staff put that in there? Do we have to recommend that right now? Like, shouldn't that have happened at maybe the April meeting, I guess? I guess the process to me was confusing.
Yeah, now, now that you say that, I understand what you're saying, and that, it's just not set up for that process.
Yeah.
This document's not...
And I guess I don't know the process, because I'm new.
Well, I, I mean, I think that the idea initially was, when it was coming back, that, to your point, that we would, we would see updates for it. And, and there are, I would agree with you that there are some updates that I think that had been recommended or suggested, at, at least that the last six months, if not before, that have not been fully incorporated into the plan.
I would, though, I would do, I would push back on the notion that after every meeting, someone on the staff has to go through and decide anything that we decided.
Yeah.
If it fits into the strategic plan and where it does.
No, definitely not, definitely not.
I don't think we should, I think it needs to be a specific direction that, hey, we noticed in our strategic plan, we have this goal, tonight we're going to talk about meeting that goal, or whatever, and that, it being that specific, because I don't think it's worth anybody's staff time to like,
No.
figure out how to categorize what we do, vis a vis the strategic plan.
No, no, I, I think it's, it's the comments specifically on the strategic plan, not meeting by meeting. So I completely agree with you on that. It, it is, you know, it was intended to be, to refresh and make sure that the things were still, were still current and relevant, yes.
Can I comment too? The strategic plan is supposed to be strategic, but not tactical. I don't think I'm too concerned about the things that are going on monthly, but, but every year we come back and take a look at it, are we headed in the right direction, based on these strategic goals that we've set up? I didn't see any reason to question that in what, in this version of it. But I too, I take your point, there are some, some things that haven't been, that haven't changed, but I'm not sure that's a bad thing, if we're headed in the right direction. Maybe that's an area where we just didn't put enough energy in, or we had to put more energy into fire recovery, or something like that. I just don't, I didn't have any...
Well, I appreciate that.
I know red flags come up on, from the...
Well, I do, appreciate that difference, because there are, there's a purple category now, which is an ongoing
Right.
thing that will always be ongoing for the, the time span of this year, versus green, which is accomplished and done. Like, I, I like that, that difference.
Yeah.
It's just, for me, I was like trying to read this and trying to understand what, if we have this living document to reference why we're doing things and what the purpose is for different i- items, and how it relates, especially to our budget book, then I would think this has to be updated a little bit more frequently for our goals right now, and alignment with what we've been talking about, because we've made some huge changes this last year. And some of those, I think, need to be reflected in this, because that's going to be designating how we go forward with budgeting certain items and prioritizing, and also for what our purpose is and what our priorities are. Like, for instance, the, the first intro, in the very first section, it changed from, public safety was our first last year and the last few years, now it's organizational stability came up kind of first, and strategic priorities. So it was number five prior, and now it's number one.
Okay.
I, I remember when we made that decision, remember, remember that?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think there is, I mean, maybe it's, it's worth revisiting some of the, like, like how we're using this. Because there's, like you said, you know, there's some of the stuff that, because it's been, been done and finished, you know, maybe it does, as, as Senior Analyst Carlson said, get moved off and into an appendix, so, so we can still see the progress, but not necessarily be in the plan. But I, you know, I actually do appreciate Councilmember Goss's comment, is, is that, you know, if, if it's giving us the direction of where we're going, maybe that's the, the best use of, of this plan. And we've got all of these action items in there, and, you know, we, many of the action items, we don't have dates associated with them, so it's not clear. Is it a priority? Are we able to get to it? So I'm not sure how much, how much energy to, to put into it, to it at this time. That's where I'm kind of, that's where, that's where I'm struggling as well.
Yeah, I'm with you, and I understand. But what I like to see, what I've been seeing recently, and especially right now as I look through these agenda reports, is that our,
Strategic Plan.
The strategic plan objectives are within the agenda reports by staff, which were, two years ago, we didn't have anything like that. So we sit here, we, we provide direction on policy that we think is important for our residents and for our city, and then when staff goes through and says, let's recommend something, they align it with our, with our overarching strategic plan, and not down to the minutia of, let's, we should do this, this, or that, but how does it fit within the, the larger goals? And so that, I think that's how the document was, why it was created, and it was a guiding document for policy, from what I recall, for like a five-year, we're looking five years out on, on policy. So, but, but I agree with you, it's important to kind of augment as we go, but how do we, I don't know if we have a process for that.
I think that's my key point. When we're looking at five years out, and we're using this as a document.
Now it's two years old, right?
Two years, no, three years old, because it starts twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, so it's three years old. When we've noticed that we're looking right now, we've had lots of questions about our projections and how we are, we've had prior plans, like say, street and sidewalks. We used to have a five and ten-year plan, bop, 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 this is what we wanted to look at. We used to have a fleet, five and ten-year plan, fire department still pretty much does, police kind of does too, where they replace their engine after this amount of years, this amount of use, this is a time when, and we know we're going to do that. We need to replace our fleet at this time. Now, that's very, like, specific, but in no, nowhere of our strategic plan does it say that we're developing long-term capital project plans. And so when we're looking at like street repairs and sidewalk repairs, we're internally kind of looking, okay, we're analyzing, why should we repair that street? Because we've had a lot of calls on it. That's not, it's not like anywhere in this, this strategic plan. So things like that, I think we would want to add as a council going forward, so we're not getting stuck looking at how we're looking at repairs.
So I'm just going to say that that's actually not true. If you look at page twelve, it actually talks specifically about a three, a four-year plan to analyze, prioritize, and correct the sidewalks. So I do think that there are specific, there's like sort of two levels here, right? There were sort of the overarching thematic things, and then at the time, there were action steps implemented as to how to get, at least in the short and long term, to, short and midterm, to get to those things. And so I do think there were, you know, I, I agree with you that we've talked a lot, a little bit ad hoc about some of this stuff recently, that feels a little bit scattershot, but I think, I don't know if that's because the plan doesn't have it, or because we're sort of talking about it outside of the plan, because the, the plan actually does...
I see sidewalks, I meant like the streets. Remember how we figured?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I hear what you're saying. I'm just, I actually just wonder if part of, part of the issue is that we need a process by which this, like, we need to figure out what we want to do with this, and, and then how to...
Update it?
Not, not update it per se, like do a whole new strategic plan, but how, how to implement it in a way that aligns, you know, with sort of the other discussions that we're having. I mean, and I think the agenda report notations, as you mentioned, is a good first start, but I do think we, we maybe need to be also a little bit more cognizant when we are talking about policy matters, about referencing it perhaps. I mean, because I think we sort of just have conversations, and, you know, it goes where it goes, but we're not always guided by this either.
So, so, I mean, to me, it seems that, you know, where, where we're going in this, this conversation is, is that the, the strategy seems to resonate, right? It's, it's the action steps that, that almost, the action steps almost need to, to be in the different departments, right? And it should be part of their plans and their action items versus in the strategic plan, because, because they're the ones that have the detail to go in and implement it. But the overall strategy is, we go back and we look at like, okay, are we actually, and what are we focused on? How are we focused on the, these items? I, I also think that, you know, if, if we're going to continue on this, and if it's the council's interest and importance on this, you know, right now, this is, this is housed within the, the Public Works Department, right? And, and Senior Analyst Carlson's done a phenomenal job with it. I really applaud everything he's done. But if we really want to have this happen, But if we really want to have this happen, you know, if it's really a strategic plan, if it's really something that's important, we really should come out of the city manager's office.
And knowing, knowing our new city manager, I, I feel like this is something he'd really enjoy doing.
I, I'd like to go back to this notion that we should be talking about policy and strategy and leaving implementation to the staff. I'm just going to say, that's not how we've been acting recently. Like, I would personally prefer that to be the case than debating which intersections we have sidewalks at. So, I mean, if we really are going to think more about our role as policy setters and strategic discussion, it would be great if that was sort of what we focused on and not three-hour meetings about minutia. Especially, I, I don't know, I've made the comment many times that we're usually not experts on most of the things we're talking about. And I always often don't feel qualified to make decisions at that level of detail. So I know this is a little bit outside of what we're talking about, but I'm just using that opportunity to suggest that I would love the notion of moving towards more of a policy-setting, strategic-goal-setting level of, of council um, versus some of the minutia that we sometimes delve into, but, you know.
Actually, I don't think that that is at all out of the realm. I think you're absolutely spot on with that. I think that actually, like, like if we really get, I mean, if we're a strategic body and if we're really setting the strategy, you know, we should have strategies and policies and programs and direction. And we, and we, like you said, that the intersections is a perfect idea. It's, it's more of how do we evaluate the intersections? What's the criteria to do it? Rather than going in and, and, and trying to figure out whether or not a stop sign, sign should be at, at a certain location. So I, I, I think that that's, I, I, I would, I would, I would agree with that.
Here's the problem with that. The public shows up and they're not going to staff. They may, may have already been to staff to get an explanation and they're not satisfied. They don't understand. They come to us and then they put it in our hands and we could go back to staff and say strategically, this is what we're after. But ultimately, the feedback loop brings the public back to us. So that's why I think a lot of times we're in the minutia because they expect us to be in the minutia. And as much as I would like to, to kind of trust the experts, that's not what the public wants from us. They, they want us to know, to have our hands in this because we're their representatives.
I would say that they look for us.
Working for us.
Sorry. I would say they look for us, right, for direction, but we are giving staff that direction. This is what we want to see. They're figuring out how to do it.
And we've done that too. We do that, do that, right?
Instead of us trying to fix, how do we, for instance, the stop sign, how do we qualify for the stop sign to be a four-way stop? Instead of us trying to figure that out, we're saying we want a four-way stop there. Figure it out.
Well, I, 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 I put it, I put it slightly differently is, is what's the criteria for a four-way stop? Like, what did, did, does, does need, what needs to happen to have a four-way stop? And, and how does that process get appealed if people ha- have safety concerns or other parts? So it's, it's a process base versus.
You're not going to minutia again.
No, but it, 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 it's about the, the, the processes is that is, i- is, what is the process for, for determining traffic calming i- items? Right? And, and then, and then we agree, here are the things that, that, that go into traffic calming items. And then if, if, to council member Goss's point, if the public raises those and says, well, they're concerned about this, then we have staff say, report and say, why, you know, they go and evaluate whether or not it meets the criteria that we gave direction on, right? It's the overall criteria.
I think the po- and you're totally right about how that's developed. But I, I guess what I would say to that is that we then come back to the same problem, that then we are focused on only those things that get brought to us by the public and we're sort of then cherry picking, for lack of a better word, the issues that people feel that, certain people feel the most strongly about and come, and, and we're talking about a lot of, a lot of the sort of biases about, you know, like, oh, of course the traffic's terrible outside my house because that's the traffic I know. And then we're basing decisions based on who happens to be here and who happens to raise the, the issue. Whereas I would like to be able to say, we are concerned about having safe streets. And we think our, uh, you know, this, these are the standards for safety in our city. And how do we then implement those standards? And then when the public comes and says, I don't agree, why didn't you put a four-way stop at my intersection? We can say, here are our standards for evaluating that and your intersection, like we've done before, right? Like, we did this when we put the, the stop sign in a mountain trail. Other people wanted a stop sign at Rancho. And we said, that intersection doesn't qualify based on our, you know, based on our standard. And so I think it'd be, I think, you know, we would have to respond, like you said, but I don't think we need to respond by saying, we will do what you ask for, because sometimes what's being asked for isn't.
That's not how we did Highland. That's not how we did the four-way stop at Highland, though.
But they, they expect us to have our hands on this because they, they voted for us to be here. And they don't have a, aside from personal relationships with members of our staff, some people have such relationships. Most of the staff are anonymous to them and have no kind of reporting to them. At least in a formal sense, when they show up here and make comment or send us an email, they're expecting some kind of detailed response. And I can't just quote them criteria that we're, we're asking of the staff. I'm going to have to tell them something a little bit more human so that they believe that I'm actually re- representing them. So I, I feel, I feel like we could only go so far with this idea of strategic guidance. I, like I said earlier, I think the general direction of this has helped us. I, because these, these, these goals are being threaded into our staff reports now. I just wouldn't get too crazy about the details. Uh, and, and not crazy, but if you focus on them and then you, you want to kind of set them aside and, and turn them over to staff, I'm fine. We've got a great staff. They do a great job. But again, I, I want to know what's going on. I, I want to be able to explain it to people. And we may have to have discussions and debates about some minutia here, you know, if it gets to that point.
So my question then, I, why I brought this up is mostly, how do we update this strategic plan? When should that be happening? Was tonight supposed to be the time we're supposed to be doing that? I didn't think so.
When you say update, what do you mean?
So for instance, stra- uh, page eight. Strategy PS one point one for public safety, action steps, uh, in red. Fire chief will analyze and determine the need for a paid intern for the department to be included in a budgetary planning for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six and funding for future years, funding yet to be determined. But the wording is a paid intern. When, I think that was kind of when we were also looking for, um, staffing for a full-time position for, for an administrative assistant, which they, which they end up staffing. Should we, does that mean to be changed to what we actually talked about in our agenda, which is replacing intern with a deputy chief risk reduction, which is part of our master plan? Like, those things that, that we've been looking at, are we supposed to be using this and updating that according to what our goals are for the, for the next year, for twenty-five, twenty-six?
And so to me, I think, you know, where, where I see this conversation heading is, is that the action steps, you know, thi- this is, I don't know that this represents the direction that I'm hearing coming from the, the fire department on where their priorities are, right?
This is from us, right?
Well, hold on, let me, can I, if, if you allow me to finish. So, so the, the strategy is to, i- is to achieve optimum staffing, right? And that's a dynamic thing. That's the, is something that's, that's changing. And to, and to me, if we're going to keep this as a strategic plan, i- i- it may make more sense to take the action item steps and put it back in, into the department. So like when we get the annual update from the fire department and they're talking about where they need to go, what they need to prioritize, that's where that goes versus trying to manage it in here where it, it, it is a much, you know, it takes a lot more time to manage it here and i- in their own, um, plans that they've got within the department. It's the same with any of the others. And so, you know, maybe it makes more sense to just collapse this down into something, because, because I think it's right. I think we've got general agreement that the, the overall strategies have been helpful. It helps us see where we're going.
Hundred percent.
It's, it's the action items, I think, is where I see us getting tripped up.
And that's what I'm asking. So if these are our direction, our strategic plan.
No.
For our city. This is, this is our document for council. This is what we've approved is what our strategic plan is for the city of Sierra Madre. Okay? This, these action steps.
I wouldn't categorize it that way, though.
That's what we just were talking.
We, we want, we had residents involved, we had workshops. It's not just hours as the council.
One hundred percent, one hundred percent. One hundred percent.
But that was more at the, that was more at the, the, the heading level, I guess.
Strategy level.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
We, we were not intimately involved.
No.
In PS one point one D and E and F, like those were then.
Those were brought by each department, right?
Yes, based on our, our goals, based on our direction. We didn't just come up with them randomly. These are based on our direction and also their data, their master plans, their str- their feedback from co- um, different consultants. I mean, we've had a consultant discuss tonight where we're going with our general plan.
Right.
Right? So when we use these professionals and we're paying money for these things, shouldn't we validate that in our action plan? Like, this is where we're going based on this consultant we've just spent fifty, not, not this one particularly, but say another one for fifty thousand? Can't we use that in our strategic plan as for why we're moving forward with something?
I'm not sure that it makes sense to put it in, 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 in the strategic plan. Be- because to, to your point earlier, it's not, it, it, it is not being updated.
That's what I mean. Why isn't it being updated, I guess? We're just using the same one over and over?
Than writing, I guess. I'd rather them spend time actually putting into action than we're updating a report constantly.
But the ones that have been done for three years straight, they're green, they're not going to get updated more. They're already done. We've done it. It's been great. It's fantastic. They aren't ongoing. They're not purple. They're not, they don't need to change to purple.
So you're recommending taking them out of the report? I don't understand what you're recommending.
So if something's been green and we've done it and it's been done for two years, we're just showing that it's been done and there's nothing else in that whole category to do. It's all green.
Mm-hmm.
Not purple, like it's an ongoing thing. It's all green. So we have, we've completed it. It's done. It's just sitting there.
Okay, so this is, so I think, I think the green one's straightforward. But, but if you've got a green one, so let's go to, to, um, PS one point one A, right?
Yes.
And that's, that's green, but does that mean it's completed? But it's not going to be done till the fourth quarter of this year. So I'm, I'm trying to understand like your, your thought on the green ones. The green ones aren't necessarily the ones completed.
I went through every single one and I compared it to two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-four. So there, I can see why some are exactly the same. But if they were completed, uh, I can find another example. If it was completed, say, in two thousand twenty-four, uh, let's see.
Well, PS one point one B, the, the, the public survey.
Or E.
Yes.
Right.
So.
Or, or PS one point two A.
Look at my, look at my rationale. Go down to PS one point one D. We used that master plan. It's complete, it's completed, uh, the single master plan by the fourth quarter of done. But yeah, we didn't update this other action plan that's right below it, one point one D. Again, fire chief will analyze and determine the need for a paid intern for the department, funding not yet determined. We don't even need that. We don't need a paid intern. That's not what the master plan said. That's not what the, this, we've heard last week in public comment. That's not what the public wants. It's not what the department wants. So why is it still sitting there? That's my point. When do we change that?
I, I, I think you're, you're emphasizing the point that we take the action items out.
Or we update it and say that depart- a deputy chief risk reduction, a risk reduction.
So, so let me, let, let me kick this to the city manager. City manager, I mean, you've, you've seen strategic plans in other cities and, you know, wh- how, how do you see this, this document working for, you know, as something to, to help both staff and the council?
Yeah, and, and I appreciate the question, um, and the council's discussion on, on all of this. I mean, we've gone from, you know, representative democracy to the council manager form of government to how do we implement, you know, the various plans and, and budgets that we have in the city? Um, you know, a, a strategic plan is an important, an important document, right? It helps align our work plan as, uh, as professionals, as administrators, to direct staff to achieve the specific directions and outcomes that the council has outlined in the strategic plan, right? Um, I agree with the notion that the goals should be strategic um, and not necessarily focused on specific tactical objectives. Uh, because those, those things often change during the course of the year based off of circumstances on the ground, funding, budgets, things of that nature. I think what is missing from the discussion is the linkage of the strategic plan to the budget. And I know that we have included and incorporated some of the action plans, um, from the strategic plan in the budget document, but that doesn't necessarily correlate to where we're spending the money in terms of department work plans. Um, and as part of the next evolution or iteration of budgeting for the city of Sierra Madre, one of the things that I'd like to bring, um, when we're doing budget development, are those de- budget, are those department work plans? So that you can see the things that we're planning for and how they're aligned to the strategic plan, uh, moving forward based off of available resources that we have. And staff will then be able to determine and allocate, okay, this year, we might be able to take a small bite of this, you know, this concept and we're going to complete this other one and we'll align it. So you'll see that, uh, the funding aligns with the goals and objectives that align with the overall strategy in the strategic plan. That all being said, um, you know, the strategic planning document is a living document and we do need to go back and revisit it, um, you know, on a, on a periodic basis. I don't see that type of timeframe set within the document as it exists today. Um, so one of the things we might want to do as we start to improve upon some of the budgeting practices and strategic planning practices that we have, um, is to revisit this plan in its entirety, uh, because a lot has changed over the last three years. And are these goals still, um, sufficient and appropriate for the city? Um, if they are, how do we align the budget and the resources that we have to achieve the tactical objectives that complete the goals that have been set forth, uh, you know, in front of us? So there's, I think, more discussion to be had in this arena. Um, you know, for, for tonight, I would maybe say, receive and file the report. Um, let us go back and come back probably around, um, you know, the, the beginning of next year. Uh, maybe when we start to do budget kickoff. Let us work through the process of aligning department work plans with the strategic goals that we, that we have in here. Um, and then plan for maybe a larger scale strategic plan update, um, during the course of next year and we maybe revision this whole thing, uh, bring in another consultant, uh, you know, if the council's interested in doing that, get more community feedback and input, um, and include some of those things that I think that are, that are missing in the plan.
Thoughts? Does that seem general net head nods?
Yeah, like having more of a purpose and understanding.
All right, so with, with that, uh, we've gone through council discussion, so we are on the consent agenda. So, uh, I think at this point I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. All right, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a public hearing. Uh, it's for ordinance fourteen eighty-six. Um, who is going to be presenting this one? This one, I, yep, Chief Bartlett.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem and Council. Um, thank you for the opportunity to, to present this tonight. Um, I'd like to punt it over to our, uh, city attorney, um, uh, because I think we're going to probably have to start off with some procedural information and then we can bring it back to us, so.
Uh, council, this, this item was, um, agendized incorrectly and unfortunately, we didn't catch it until after the publication of the public hearing. It's, it's not a big issue, but what it says is, it's going to, it's go- we're going to adopt and amend the twenty twenty-five international fire code and the twenty twenty-five California fire code. We are not amending the international fire code. Uh, instead of what we're doing is we're going to be adopting the wildland urban interface code.
Okay.
Uh, and it, and it's all spelled out in the staff report. The ordinance is correct. But because we noticed it, um, incorrectly, we thought, we thought, and but, and because we have, um, uh, our fire marshal Randy Metz here today, we thought we'd just do the business today. So he'll present a staff report, uh, we can have the questions answered. And then, uh, we will repu- we will renotice this for our October meeting and for first reading at the October twenty-eighth meeting. Okay.
So, so, so what I'm hearing is, is that we're able to, to hear the information, hear the, the update and then, but we, but we're going to renotice it and vote on it at the next meeting.
Right.
So, so, so will, will we go through public comment and discussion on that or, or just the presentation?
Yeah, yes. I recommend going through everything, but just don't take any action on it.
Got it. Okay. And do, do we need then to continue the item? Um, or do, do we need to have a vote to continue the item or, or do we just need, do we need to take any action to bring it back on the next agenda?
No, no need to take any action. Staff will re-agendize it. The reason I say don't continue it for that date certain is because we're going to republish the public hearing notice. So there's, normally you would continue to a date certain if you don't want to republish, but in this case, we do want to republish, so.
Got it.
No need to take any action.
Understood. Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
And thank you. That's why we do have a city attorney. So appreciate clarification on the procedural stuff. Oh, and with that, I'd like to bring, uh, our fire marshal Randy Metz forward to basically, uh, provide you with the information in his staff report. So, Randy, thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem and members of the city council. Uh, you have our agenda item before you. There's a lot of detail in there as far as what we're amending locally. But basically, it is the, uh, first time for the three-year cycle for us to adopt the California fire code, the twenty twenty-five California fire code and, uh, the new California. code, and, uh, the new California twenty twenty-five wildland urban interface code. Uh, we have no additional local amendments that are being proposed to the California fire code. All of the amendments that, uh, are being proposed in the agenda item and the ordinance are carrying forward from your previous adoption back in twenty twenty-two. Uh, the twenty twenty-five California fire code is based off of the twenty twenty-four international fire code, so that's where the confusion came when the advertisement was done. But our amendments actually are to, um, the twenty twenty-five California code that has been adopted through the Building Standards Commission, uh, in Sacramento. They then let us do local adoption processes, uh, if we can determine that we have issues that are specific to topographical, climatic, or geologic issues that are specific to the city of Sierra Madre, which are also in the facts and findings that are part of the ordinance there. There is, uh, reference to the new California wildland urban interface code, we've got a lot of discussion on code requirements in the Wui area at this meeting tonight. This is not any new language or code requirements. This is a consolidation that, uh, members of the state fire marshal's office and, uh, local jurisdictions worked on for a period of two years to consolidate all of the requirements that are, uh, in place and affect construction in the wildland urban interfaces, areas. Uh, this kind of goes along with the map that you guys previously adopted earlier this year, that sets your hazard severity zones. Uh, those code requirements were found throughout multiple different, uh, codes, standards, regulations, and statutes, and it was very difficult to follow where you need to go to capture everything. So we took it upon ourselves to work with the state to consolidate all those into a single code. That code is also published by the International Code Council, but this is a California version of that code, which was adopted unanimously by the Building Standards Commission, uh, earlier this year. We have made no local amendments to that code, we are, are very comfortable with our, uh, the code as it's currently sits with the state of California, and we are, um, recommending a public hearing to get, uh, constituent input as to the adoption of the California fire code with Sierra Madre local amendments, and the California wildland urban interface code with no amendments. Uh, and I'm able to answer any questions you may have regarding these two codes that the fire department is bringing for you today.
And are you talking about both? Okay, yes. Uh, I answered my own question, sorry. Um, any questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
So just so I follow this, this, um, we're taking this action, obviously, to make sure that we've adopted what's required of us from the state and, um, the state level based on their updated laws. And when you say that there are no local, um, ordinance or, uh, ordinance updates or, or amendments required, is that maybe for two reasons? One, because the existing ordinance we have, ordinances we have that touch upon this topic are in line with these new laws, and, um, or, and/or are more stringent based on the, um, the facts and circumstances that were in the findings document that are, is also attached to the report? So that basically, we are either, our local ordinances in this area are either compliant with or require, or, you know, or, or more, um, uh, require more, more, um, stringent requirements, which, which is allowed based on the findings that we made.
So, uh, I believe I'm following your question. The, the amendments that need to have facts and findings to justify them to building standards are what we're doing in the fire code. Most of that is our local amendments to residential fire sprinklers when we require them, when we don't. Um, so, we have carried forward all of our existing requirements, we have not changed our facts and findings, they're very strong, and I have been in contact with the Building Standards Commission, and I don't anticipate any, uh, issues coming forward. This actually will be the first time with the passage of Assembly Bill one thirty, where the Building Standards Commission will actually review all of the local ordinances that are sent to them, before the process has been a receive and file, uh, and they only refer to it pretty much if somebody wants to make, uh, an appeal to the Building Standards Commission where they don't agree with something we've done. I've been doing this for thirty-four years, and none of the jurisdictions I've ever worked for actually had an, an appeal to the Building Standards Commission. So we feel very strongly that our facts and findings for the city of Sierra Madre, uh, will stand the review of the Building Standards Commission. When it comes to, uh, the requirements for, um, home hardening that are found within the wildland urban interface code, they extracted the existing requirements that we were using out of the building code, what was known as Chapter seven A, the most stringent, um, home hardening requirements anywhere in the country, and moved them from the building code into the wildland urban interface code. So we are continuing to hold all of our new construction to the same requirements that they've always had to. Our vegetation management requirements that were found in Chapter forty-nine of the fire code are now going to live in this area here. We're still going to maintain and utilize the same, uh, plant palette for non-combustible planting within the very high fire hazard severity zone. We're still going to follow, uh, the home hardening, we're still going to follow, uh, all the, the necessary noticing processes. That's all in one document now, where, that's why we're not recommending any local amendments. That was the one thing that, uh, allowed the Building Standards Commission to adopt this unanimously for the consolidation, was that California was not bringing forward any new amendments that home builders were going to have to then, um, determine how they're going to comply with in this round. Now that we've also adopted the, um, a model code from the International Code Council, California will have a much more representative position at the model code hearings for the wildland urban interface code to try to get some of our California amendments into model code, so we no longer have to try to maintain those through the Building Standards Commission because they'll already be in the published code that's used throughout the country. California actually is the first state in the country to adopt the international wildland urban interface code statewide. We have a few other states that are following, uh, us on this particular issue right here, but, uh, we believe that this is a, a big step forward for, um, home hardening and development within the urban interface areas, with California taking this step to recognize that there is a model code and adopting it statewide for all, uh, construction within our moderate, high and very high hazard severity zones.
Thank you.
So you, you, you're using "we" a lot, and I want to make sure I understand the right "we," because it's not necessarily the city. When you say "we are going to," I think you said "to the state" to correct the wildland urban interface, uh, code and, and the, the, that part of the, the fire code. Who is the "we" you're talking about? And then, when you say "we are going to the International Council," are, like, who are these "we" bodies? Because it, it, you're, you're, you're here working on behalf of Sierra Madre, but it's not Sierra Madre going forward for that. Who, who are the, you know, tell us a little bit about this process, because it's, it's...
Absolutely. Great question. Um, our model codes are actually developed with what we call the consents, consensus code-making process every three years. There is a, anybody is allowed to participate, members of the public.
Hold on, hold on one second. Our codes. Like, whose, whose codes? Is it the state's codes?
The state adopts a code that we can then amend, but the state is actively involved in the development of the model code that the state then adopts and makes local, makes statewide amendments to. So it's, it's a process that starts big and gets small, and then gets smaller when it gets to the local level right here. So the state adopts a code here, and then we get to take a more granular look and to see, does the state understand what our needs are, and we can make additional changes to that as long as we can justify them.
So when you said "we made changes," we, we went to the state to ask for changes on, on the Wui, the, the wildland urban interface. So on behalf of Sierra Madre, you went to the state of California to ask for changes on the wildland urban interface? Is that, am, am I understanding that correctly?
I represent multiple fire departments throughout Southern California. So this was a local authority, local fire department-led issue with the state fire marshal's office to request the consolidation for ease of use. The state doesn't really use this code. They adopt it, it's, all of us at the local level actually are utilizing the code. So when we realized and said, there is a, a problem here, this is not user-friendly for the developer, for the homeowner, for the jurisdiction, when I say "we," I'm talking about the California Fire Service coming together and working with the Building Standards Commission and the state fire marshal's office to get a document that is, is more usable at the local level for all of us.
Great, thank you.
So I have a question then, kind of following up with that. So when we had CalFire as well as LA County Fire come to our city to help us analyze our danger zones and, and our, our pre-planning, um, they had, they had recommended, both parties had recommended that Sierra Madre, of course, can be more restrictive than the state codes and LA County codes. Now, they suggested, LA County suggested that if we don't, we should first adopt their more restrictive codes to, for safer, uh, building codes, and if we see certain areas in our city that are more specific, that we should adopt rules such as that. I'll give you an example. Uh, One Carter is an area that's at the top of Baldwin, and they suggested that what LA, LA County does, sorry, LA County does, is that before, um, they give an occupancy permit, they suggested that the clearance around from vegetation is cleared before an occupancy permit, not just during the building phase when they have signed off that their building is, is done. So LA County has that, it's more restrictive than CalFire's code, and they suggested we do things like that. Is this already embedded in this, or would those be things that we should look at that LA City County has, sorry, LA County has, that we should look at being more restrictive?
So as you know, LA County creates their own requirements for their unincorporated areas. It doesn't affect any of the incorporated cities that LA County serves unless that jurisdiction chooses to adopt that in their fire code adoption. That would be the same here. We don't have to follow anything LA County Fire does because, A, they're not our fire department, and, B, um, we have our own fire department here, our own adoption process. We do utilize the LA County vegetation, uh, document that talks about plant palette, which plants we do utilize, because it's very comprehensive and it keeps us from having to recreate our own here, and, um, a lot of jurisdictions utilize that, a lot of jurisdictions in Orange County utilize the one that OCFA produces. So we do take some of what LA, LA County does. When we're talking about, uh, certificate of occupancy, we ensure that before we sign a certificate of occupancy here, that all of the vegetation management, all the fuel modification is already in place before we will sign, uh, a certificate of occupancy for somebody to move into that building. Then it's a matter of annual inspections to ensure that that fuel modification plan is still being adhered to, and they aren't, you know, not, choosing not to water, choosing to plant new plants that they shouldn't have. So we are doing something that is along the same lines as what LA County says, has recommended. I have not studied, you know, the specific things that LA County has recommended to the city of Sierra Madre, but we do have a process for that in our sign-off process.
Maybe this is a question for Chief. I thought, from what I understood, is we do not contract with LA County for certain services, we use LA, I'm sorry, we don't, use CalFire, we use LA County as our overseer since we're in LA County. Can you explain that, what that means? Or things like codes? Or maybe Captain Bertrand was in that conversation, I don't know.
Well, CalFire is LA County. LA County is.
LA County is, is basically...
Is CalFire for this area.
Yes, yes, that's...
Yes, that, I don't know if that cleared it up for you, but...
No, not really, because why don't we just use CalFire?
Because LA County is, for lack of better terms, is the contract agency for, um, for CalFire.
Okay, that's...
And so they represent CalFire in Los Angeles County.
In our area. So when they were saying that, so this, prior to, when we were looking at our codes and what Sierra Madre has, CalFire had this code, they didn't have an occupancy code. They, you could move into that house and your vegetation, you could move into the, to a house anywhere in Sierra Madre, and you didn't have to have your vegetate, your vegetation pushed back for, for new build. So they were suggesting that we follow LA County's building and, and occupancy codes and make them more restrictive, such as that. So are you telling me that this new code will embed those in it, and now it's a new code for us?
Yeah, I'm not, if you're following it, please...
Yeah. So I have been the one that has done all of the plan review for everything that's happened up at One Carter. We have required every parcel up there to submit a fuel mod plan, and I have personally inspected and looked at the plant palette that has been in, uh, actually planted before we signed off. So I don't necessarily agree with what LA County is telling you, because we're already doing that for the new builds that are in those particular areas, the same way we would do the same thing with a new build that's going to happen, what is it, the, the Stone?
Stone House.
Stone House, a Stone House parcel that is going to come through. So for new builds, we do place a condition on that property that they have to subject to fuel modification, that we are looking at all that through the process of approving them. We'll do the same thing, uh, with the new tract of forty-two homes as well.
So I know this isn't discussion, but I was in the car with you.
Yes.
When, when this happened, and may, maybe this will kind of enlighten you as to her question.
Mike, why?
So we were, we were touring the city, especially the places that we thought would be more prone to, uh, wildfire danger. Um, one of them was, we went up One Carter. And what, what, the CalFire representatives, I don't know if they were LA County, AS CalFire or CalFire, but I think it was LA County, um, noticed that there were buildings that were either completely built or nearly built, and the vegetation surrounding those existing buildings was monstrous, and they were appalled that it got to that point, and, because there's no one living in there, we couldn't say, we didn't have a code to say, you need to clean that up while you're building it. Um, that, that, I think that was kind of the issue.
But then, then from what we understood, when we looked at our own building codes, we didn't have an occupancy.
I don't remember this part, but, yeah.
So once they were going to move in, we could have let them move in at any time with the way it looked.
You're telling us that's...
But you're saying that's not true, so that's us then, that's us, and our code enforcement, that's our fault. Got it?
Yeah.
I thought it was that we didn't even have that code, and they could just move in as we saw it.
Yeah.
It, it has been an issue as One Carter has been developed for us to somewhat develop a process, because that one's being developed parcel by parcel. There was not a master plan for One Carter that spoke to fuel management for the whole development as a whole, which will happen for the next large development, um, up in Modesto La Rosa, we'll be handling that as a giant management plan, uh, in advance of them breaking ground on everything.
Other questions? All right, um, so then we'll go ahead and, uh, open this up for, uh, public comment. So, uh, if, Madam City Clerk, did you receive any cards for public comment? So if you'd like to fill out a card, you can come on down and...
Just change your card. Just add to your card.
Right.
I'll fill it out in a second. I was just wondering, is Altadena, um, adopting this too? You know, they're having a whole lot of build happening. Do they have any concerns about it, or no?
So, so, I mean, this, I don't know that we can speak to Altadena items here in this council meeting because we don't have any jurisdiction over Altadena.
I was just wondering, like, because, because they're about to do a huge amount of building, and I was just wondering if anybody over there had any trouble, or if they were excited about something like this.
Maybe you can contact him after the meeting, maybe?
Yeah, I, I, I think...
I can only say that this is a statewide adoption, so it applies to all jurisdictions equally. What a particular county does or does not do, I won't comment on, but you as the city of Sierra Madre, that's why we're bringing it forward, to comply with the state Building Standards Commission's adoption process.
Great. All right, thank you.
And to the extent that Altadena matters to us, because they are our neighbor, I think it's not well-known wide, widely, that Altadena is not a city, it does not have its own jurisdiction. Altadena is an unincorporated area of LA County, so all decisions around these types of things that we talk about for our city is done by the county for Altadena.
Thank you, that's a good clarification. All right, so, um, if there's no other public comment, we've already kind of brought it back for discussion. Any further discussion, uh, on this item? I think we've had a pretty, we kind of had questions that, in, that expanded into discussion.
Forward to the first reading.
Yes. All right, so then we'll go on to the next item on the agenda, uh, which is ordinance fourteen eighty-seven. Um, who've we got to present that? Is that, uh, Director Lynn?
More building codes. More building codes.
Mayor, members of the council, the next public hearing is for the adoption of the 2025 California Building Standard Code. I would like to introduce our building official, Sarkis Nazarian. Turn it over to Sarkis.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is again Sarkis Nazarian. I'm building official for the City of Sierra Madre. This item is for the adoption of the 2025 building codes. Every three years, California Building Standards Commission updates the building codes, also known as the California Building Standards Code, Title 24 California Court of Regulations. Currently, the city is enforcing the 2022 California Building Codes. On January 1, 2026, the city will be required to enforce the updated 2025 California Codes. Ordinance number 1487, amends the Sierra Madre Municipal Code to adopt by reference the 2025 California Building Standards Code to meet state requirements. In accordance with AV 130, local amendments will be limited to what is already existing in the municipal code and will be carried forward with the 2025 codes. Although my presentation is very short, this will be a very short summary. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them on the code adoptions.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Questions from the council? All right, if there's no questions from the council, I'll open it up for public comment. Madam City Clerk, did you receive any emails or comment cards for public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor, no parts were received.
All right. So, then, we'll go ahead and bring it back for discussion, since this one was, I believe, this one was noticed properly. All right. Is there any further discussion from the council? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion, move to approve, ordinance number 1487.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is Resolution 2558.
Clear's back.
Evening, Mayor Protem, Mayor Parkers, and Mayor Protem Lowen, members of the City Council. Tonight, the council will be holding a public hearing for the allocation and authorization for the city's participation in the permanent local housing allocation year fund, year five funds, or the PLHA program. This program was established by the state to expand housing opportunities and also to assist local jurisdictions in meeting their regional housing needs allocations. And for the year five funds, the city has been allocated $18,579 in the PLHA funds, and staff is proposing to delegate these, or dedicate these funds to our existing and successful senior minor home rehab program, which is currently funded through a community development block grant. While the CDBG program provides funds and forms of grants, this program would provide funds to our seniors in loans, offering flexibility for the city to determine repayment terms and also consideration for low-interest loans, or even a forgivable loan, depending on our program needs. Just want to add that we've had a success, we've had some successful projects in our senior rehab program. So, we are excited in helping our local seniors in making some essential home repairs and eager to have this new funding source to allow us to extend our programs to more seniors. That concludes my presentation. If the council has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Questions from the council?
So, for the fiscal year 2025, 2026, it says the city's total CDBG appropriation was 205,000 approximately. For 10 seniors, it says five projects have been completed. Does that mean that there's also five projects that are in the works that haven't been completed? Or is there five open spots?
Thank you for the question, Mayor Protem. So, there have been five projects that have been completed. There are a few that are in progress that are in construction or waiting to be finalized.
Is that five, or are there still available?
Yes, so, five, and then now we have five available after that, to use the remaining funds.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a clarification. So, are we, are the CDBG monies ceasing such that now we're going to use the PLH funds, or the PLHA funds intended to augment CDBG funds going forward? Or is it, I guess, is it stacking, or is it serial?
Thank you for the question. So, we plan to exhaust the funds for, from our CDBG grant first, and then, following that, use the PLHA funds as a loan to an additional resident.
So, to follow up on the question, do we get CDBG grants annually, or is it a single pot?
Thank you for the question. So, we receive an amount of, or an allocation every fiscal year, and it will roll over, or, yeah, roll over to the next fiscal year if they're not spending.
So, we get both CBDG and PLHA funds every fiscal year, and so, we're putting them together for this year, and then we'll do so for, into the future?
That's correct.
Great. Okay. Any other questions? All right. Then, we'll go ahead and open this up for public comment. Madam City Clerk, have you received any emails or comment cards for this agenda item?
Neither, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Seeing that we have none, we'll go ahead and bring this back for discussion. Any discussion?
I'm very glad we do this.
Yes.
Well said. Thank you.
As the senior community commission liaison, I know that that commission and the individuals that come to those meetings appreciate these grants for, you know, doing things such as handrails and ramps and things to augment their homes as people age. It's been really, really good.
Yeah, I think it's a great use of funds, yeah. Excellent. Well, with that, I'll entertain a motion to, for this item.
Move to approve Resolution 2558.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are on to our discussion item, and regarding PUSD crossing guard services. Who will be giving this presentation?
I will be giving this presentation, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Steph and I met with representatives from the Pasadena Unified School District last week to discuss a memorandum of understanding between the school district and the city for a cost-share relationship for crossing guard services. I'm pleased to inform the council that we did receive positive reception from the school district, and they have identified funding to enter into an agreement with us if we are willing to partner with them on a 50-50 cost-share basis for crossing guard services at Sierra Madre Elementary and Sierra Madre Middle School. So, staff is seeking direction tonight from the council to begin negotiations for that MOU.
Great. Questions from staff?
So, will there be any administrative needs, other than doing an annual RFP or whatever with them, or is it, the outside service will take care of that, or is PUSD going to take care of it, or do we take care of it?
PSD is going to manage the contract.
Okay. So, they'll handle the scheduling and all of that?
That's correct.
Wonderful.
When can they start?
As soon as we enter into an agreement. It could be in the next couple of weeks.
Great. Any other questions? All right, we'll go ahead and open this up for public comment. Madam City Clerk?
No speaker cards on this, Mr. Mayor, and no emails.
Great. Close public comment. Bring it back.
We've been getting so much public comment about the problem, and zero public comment about the solution. That's just too bad. Let's figure out a way to.
Hope you're cheering at home, everybody.
Let's figure out a way to publicize this.
Thanks, Steve.
I think, honestly, I think this is a huge win.
It is.
For our city and our staff and council, I'll commend us as a body as well, and, like, we need to figure out a way to better publicize our wins, right? Because God knows our non-wins are often very well-publicized.
Well, I think that that's probably part of some good direction to be giving to the city staff. You're absolutely right. I couldn't have said it any better. So, yeah, I, is there any other discussion on this? I mean, it is, it's a very nice win, and thank you for, you know, discussing with them and for the way you presented it, because it seemed to be very effective. Any other discussion on this item? Well, then, Mr. City Manager, do you have adequate direction? I mean, well, I, no, there's no motion on this item. It is a discussion item, and so, I think, I mean, you know, maybe perhaps, is anybody opposed to the city going into an MOU with PUSD?
We would be seeking, I would be seeking a motion from the city council authorizing me to enter into an MOU with PUSD in a 50-50 cost-share arrangement.
So, moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? There we go. All right. We are at the end of the agenda. Is there, are there any future agenda items?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Hold on a second.
Yes.
Actually, I have two. So, one is, I'd like to recommend, for the council's discussion, discontinuing the standing reports on our bears, given that the last, I don't know, three or four have been sort of a no-report report. I think we could, you know, it was a good idea to have that when we had a lot of activity, but I think until there's a noticeable uptick, I think we can relieve the chief of that duty and save the trees of the presentation. So, that would be one item for future agenda deletion, I guess.
So, do you need to have, I mean, do you need to have council discussion on it? Do we have to agendize getting rid of a presentation?
No.
Okay, great. All right. Just checking.
Then, my other was, I'd recently seen that there has been, maybe as part of these laws that just got passed this past week, an update to the Brown Act. So, I guess I would ask, perhaps, to the extent that it's meaningful for us and our city business, that our city attorney at some point provide us an update as to the import of that update.
As we're going to create, the firm is drafting a memo.
And you'll plan to give it?
Yes, I'll circulate it to the council.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right. Any other future agenda items?
I don't know if it's an agenda item, but I know previously we had discussion about finding out about sirens in the city, and there were certain, we discussed certain different sirens that could be potential for our city. I don't know if there are grants or not, but I think one thing we always probably should revisit and have maybe a presentation on is our evacuation plan. I think we're doing a great job, but it's always, I think, good to kind of revisit that and think about things, and I recommend, I brought back an idea that I heard from two League of Cities ago, was a different type of siren on the vehicle. It was like a high-low, and that alerted residents to then maybe tune in to emergency channels to see what's going on. And if we don't have sirens throughout the city, maybe our emergency vehicle, I'm not trying to provide direction, but this is what, like, an example of what I heard for, from an Orange County city when they did an evacuation, and that went very well, so.
So, would it be accurate to kind of characterize that as evacuation plans, including sirens, and make it keep it broad?
Maybe it's like an update.
Notification? I like that.
An update on where we are as far as on that. Again, I think we're doing very well, better than most, but it's probably good to revisit this in a public setting.
Well, to piggyback on that for some direction, at the CAL cities conference, that same issue comes up with all of our areas that lack cell service, and if our electricity's down, we lack Wi-Fi. So, a lot of what we're hearing also in the Eden Fire Report on terms of the other cities and Altadena, was that a lot of notifications didn't come around until the people left their homes, because their cell service picked up once they got out of a dead zone. With our dead zones, the need for siren-type alerts like Maui has, and they don't use it just for tsunamis anymore, of course. So, agree, like, looking at these things that we didn't have cell service that night, we didn't have, if your cell towers are also burning down, then you don't have cell service, you don't have Wi-Fi, you don't have any service to notify digitally. So, how do we notify people? So, great.
For any type of emergency.
Any type of emergency.
Fire, wind event, or earthquake, or whatever, so.
All right.
Thanks.
Any other agenda, future agenda items?
Yes, I don't know if this is an agenda item, but could we get an update maybe by next time, and also look at the plan for really revisiting the Yucca Trail debris basin and at the Nature Friends? Two people weren't able to make it tonight, because their homes are being cleaned out from flooding and mud, but I've heard multiple reports, including my in-laws, that wondered, they thought it was being cleaned and it wasn't, so can we get that looked at? And then, the other one was, and this is way in the future, it doesn't necessarily be agendized for an item, but in an analysis, we don't have an economic development plan in our city, and I know that other small cities like South Pasadena and Monrovia kind of looked at ways to increase their revenue, and I know the Revenue Committee's doing that, but in our last report from the consultants that looked at our downtown district, that was one thing I really saw that lacked, was what businesses are where, what builds more revenue, like, having amazing, great, like, a lab-type place in the middle of downtown, where you would have more frequent people. Can we look at some type of analysis, especially since you are from other cities, small and large, about what we could do in terms of economic development? Can we look at what, like, restaurants we would encourage to come in that would build more sales tax versus, like, services that don't bring in a sales tax?
Are you looking more specifically for, like, various types of economic development programs, or are you looking at specific uses and that type of analysis? Because those are.
I guess, I'm not sure totally, but more of what could we do better? Like, could we encourage more businesses that fit this type of a sales income versus those that don't bring in any sales tax in our downtown district? Is there a way that we do that? Is there programs that we? I know, I know Monrovia did tap into a grant to help do some of that economic development back when they built their downtown district, that's like two blocks.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll circle back with planning, and we'll come back with an item for discussion.
Thanks.
All right. Any other future agenda items? All right, then, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Is that moved?
All right, second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right.
Dodgers are up, five to one.
October 28. Seriously? I forgot they were on. What inning?
Bottom of the ninth.
What?
Bottom of the ninth?
Yep.
Seriously?
Started at 5:08, I believe.
Oh, my goodness. I forgot to tape it.
Oh, no.
If we didn't have December 1st.